Good evening, welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education work session for Monday, February 4th, 2019. The board has already been called to order, we had a closed session right before this meeting, and then we entered back into closed session, into open session before we came back down the hall. First item on our agenda is a call for a moment of silence in remembrance of Kathy Klontz, a custodian from Hickory Ridge High School who recently passed away. Please join me. Before we set the agenda, I'd like to thank Deputy Wilson, the School Resource Officer at Coxmo Elementary, for joining us tonight. Thank you. Board members will take a motion to set the agenda as presented.
Move, second.
Chair.
Yes.
There may be a correction on this. Item eight, should that be January 14 or February 11?
I'm sorry. Which one are you referring to?
Item eight, items, item eight on the agenda, items for consideration or action, shouldn't that be February 11?
No, these are, the votes are on February 11.
Right, agenda item eight.
Maybe, I think it's a typo.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like the, yeah.
Yes, it should be.
Yeah, and then this one's one too. Yeah, we have a couple of date snafus, this, the work tonight is for February 4th.
I think that's the only place it appears that way in the agenda.
No, I'm saying the agenda tonight is for February 4th. So the action items except for the two we will do right in the beginning of the agenda, all other action items will be on the February 11th agenda. Okay, so who made the motion down there, please? Mr. Harrison?
I have the motion to set the agenda with the changes.
Okay, and who had the second?
I had the second.
Mr. Shoemaker had the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. So board members, the first item we have is, we're doing this a little bit backwards how we normally do personnel at the end of the night, but I'll take a motion to approve the February 4th, 2019 personnel list.
So move, second.
Mr. Walter made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes seven zero. And then board members, you've been presented with a contract for the Beverly Hills site review. Mr. Shoemaker, do you want to provide any additional information?
Board members, I have a copy of the schedule that I'll be glad to hand out later on, but as you can see, you've had the contract, there were very minor changes to it, and so based on that, Morrisburg is ready to take off and start doing this work if we approve this tonight.
I would make a motion that we approve the contract and get to work on it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Ms. Blackwell made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Now we'll begin our traditional work session. We have the budget amendments with Ms. Klutz.
Good afternoon, we have budget amendments before you, the state budget as you will see. Bonus pay, that's the principal bonus pay, well, we had a principal to separate service and so DPI allocated that and then took that back. The next one are, is coding changes from ESSA, so every student succeeds act requires that we report per pupil expenditures on the student, the school report card, and in order to do that, we've had to align our coding in a different way at the state level so that it can eventually be at, you know, all states at the federal level so that the coding is very similar. So those are some changes, reclassing those to comply. Any questions on state? Okay, go to local. Same here, some coding changes to comply with ESSA, and then the allocation for the metal detectors and winding instruments that we discussed at the previous meeting. Next one is our federal budget amendments, and that's just a reclass from our Title I funds. And capital outlay, you can see there's an allocation of $12,000 to do site testing on a potential site for the new middle school. And finally, the last one, some adjustments to our local special fund, some are ESSA requirements, and then there's some, some grants that you'll see, so the S&amp;P Daily Alliance grant there, and the Jimmy Johnson grant, and an ABC grant that we've received. Any questions?
What is ABC?
John, so it's the alcohol board, and so they give out grants, ABC.
Alcohol beverage control.
Commission.
And that goes to workshop expenses for what?
So it's the prevention of alcohol abuse, and so they give out grants to prevent...
To teach the teacher or is it?
Teach students.
Okay, workshop is being student, workshop means students.
Not necessarily, workshop could be either.
Okay. Okay, we're always appreciative of the grant opportunities that our schools get.
Yes, we are. This one's been a great one.
Question, does that, are, you get a lump sum, does that, is that spread over the whole school system, or is that, and is that how you do it, or how does it work?
This is our second year, the first year was last year that we received, it's about $100,000, and of course we did, it was district wide, we spread it over the district and had certain initiatives that he did. I was hoping maybe John could talk to you more in detail about it, but surprisingly, we received it again this year, very happy to have received that, and it was more. So I think we're probably up to $130,000.
So it comes with some specifications like for, obviously for training about alcohol and some of that kind of stuff, so John works with that board again to use that information, but it's to, to prevent obviously minors from that, so it's been helpful for us to, you know, try to help prevent obviously students and young people from alcohol and drugs.
Okay, any other budget amendment questions? Okay, consent agenda? Are we good with that? Okay. The next item is, are the policy revisions for approval on first reading. We'll have Ms. Reimer join us.
Good evening. So we have several up for first read, I'm not used to standing up here and reading these, but I'll try to do that as quickly as I can. Policy 3410 is a testing and assessment program. This is required minor edit with an attorney recommended additional change, and it's a change, the attorney's just added the word excluding the English language learner in that one. Policy 3420, student promotion and accountability, these are required changes. It adds a new section to H about credit recovery and updates legal references. Policy 57 and 7350, public records, retention, release and disposition, these are PLS recommended and additional attorney recommended edits. It updates the duties of the records officer, and in section E clarifies that the release of the subscriber list must be consistent with FERPA and updates legal references. There was also an attorney recommendation there as well. You can see, policy 7720, employee political activities, this was a board requested review and a return, attorney recommendation, and it added an insert which was about the political activities of politicians on our school grounds during the school day. Policy 7920, reduction in force, teachers and school administrators is a required minor edit only and an attorney recommended additional change. The attorney change was insert time limits, and from the PLS update, it removed outdated references and updates cross references. Policy 8325 is daily deposit, it is a recommended change and adds internal control requirements, and from what Ms. Klutz has let us know, we currently do that already. And then policy 8510, school finance officer, these are recommended, it adds duties for the finance officer and updates legal references and cross references.
Okay, board members, let's start kind of in order here, 3410. Any questions, comments?
The state superintendent just put something out about reducing testing in schools, is this our only policy that deals with testing?
I can't answer it off the top of my head, I know the state superintendent has put out many things about, you know, limiting testing, I'll defer to our attorney if he thinks there's other policies or...
I mean, we hear from our constituents all the time that there's too much testing in schools. If this is our policy, is there anything in this policy we can do to help reduce the testing that we're doing, or eliminate something that's not necessary? Would that be the proper policy to address that?
I, I think that's more than implementation of the assessment, this is kind of the rules around if it is included in the final grade and that sort of thing. So I don't think, this doesn't specify what students are tested on or when they're tested, so. But that's great if DPI does slow down on some of the requirements.
Yeah, I think that even right there, you can see it says other testing as designated by the state board or Department of Public Instruction, so anyway, this guides that to say whatever the state superintendent changes, we're going to follow, right? And again, Mr. ...
Throughout this policy, it basically says we'll, we'll do, we need to do whatever is required by the State Board of Education. So the state superintendent is going, is planning to propose some things, and some of this is mandated by the legislature, some of the testing requirements, we have to do it in order to comply with ESSA, and some we don't, and so the state superintendent has said that he's going to try to propose, working with the General Assembly and the State Board of Education to reduce testing requirements, but it's got to go through, most of this is required by the State Board of Education, so it's going to have to go to State Board of Education for changes.
Okay, so 3410 on consent agenda? 3420, sorry, 3420, student promotion and accountability? Concerns? Consent agenda? 5070, 7350 for public records, retention, release and disposition. 7720, employee political activities.
Question, did they find, we had discussion on this, and I don't know if this board remembers, but originally this was bought up last year, this policy, and it was put off until this coming year, because the main thing that is in this policy, it talks about candidates putting materials in the mailboxes of the teachers. And when this was originally bought up, it was right before the election last year, and they said, well, since this was so near the election, wait until after the election was over and bring it back up.
Right.
So when this was bought up to the policy committee, one of the things that I bought up and some of the other ones, first of all, how many systems are allowing this, and also, you know, talking with the principals that we have, you know, what was their concern? Some of the principals made remarks, you know, they did have a concern, first of all, for security. Second of all, talking about, you know, when individuals come in and put things into the box, they were concerned about, you know, individuals seeing, you know, what's in the boxes already. There may be materials that they shouldn't be seeing. Again, one of the things I stated that, you know, when individuals come in, they could be carrying two or three bags and things like that, you know, security wise, do you know what's, you know, what's in those bags and things like that? Also, you know, when you've got 12, 14 individuals, you know, that's a lot of individuals coming into the area, a lot of times, you know, now, most individuals comply with what, you know, the policies and what's going on, but not all of the mailboxes are right there at the door, sometimes they have to go on into the school building, that is a concern. Now, I don't know if y'all have had time to find out what other, how many systems allow this type of thing or not, have you had a chance to do that?
So Mr. Shaw spoke to that in the policy meeting as well, as Sue had already done a little bit of work, and no one around us allows that, and Mr. Shaw commented on that in our policy meeting as well to say, most school districts do not allow people to, you know, this facility to distribute political messaging.
I mean, and number wise, or, I mean, I know Kannapolis does not, but I mean, number wise, how many?
No one in our region.
Allows that type of thing?
There's 11 in Region 6 alone, so.
And none of those, none of those allow that. The only other concern, I mean, one of the things, I mean, to get out information, a candidate would have to find another means to do that, and that's, that's one of the concerns I would have.
Yeah, I think as time has gone on, and reason we even started discussing in the fall is, it gets more and more, I'll say, a stretch as far as what people are putting up, where they're putting things, and so we want to be careful.
So what's the difference between this and somebody coming in and doing marketing materials for whatever, after school or whatever?
We don't allow that at all.
So we don't allow that, so we shouldn't allow.
Correct, yeah.
I'm a little concerned with the, the restriction on emails, I don't know how you enforce that, and I think our emails are public record anyway, so I don't think, I'd like to see that removed, but other than that, I'm okay with it.
Now, I think what that's saying is that somebody who's a candidate can't take and do a mass distribution to the school system.
Well, if those emails are public record, they can, good name.
If, once something's sent in an email, it's public record unless there's an exception because it's got confidential student information or personal information or something like that, but the fact that something might become a public record if it's sent over email doesn't make our email system a public forum. So what, the difference here is whether or not we're opening up our email system to become a public forum, and what this policy is saying is, no, we're not, we're keeping it a closed forum. So the open, the, the public records law has nothing to do with that.
Okay, I still think it's a little more restricted than it probably should be.
Okay, so do we want this on consent agenda, or you want to vote on individually? Action? Okay.
What'd you say, Lomit?
Action agenda, yeah, we'll, we'll have an individual vote on that one. Okay, 7920, reduction of force. Any questions or comments? Okay, consent agenda? Consent agenda? And lastly, 8510, school finance officer. Consent? Everybody good? Okay. Okay, so Mindy, we'll have the top three and bottom three on consent, and 7720 on action. Okay. Okay, then we'll have policy revisions for approval on second reading, you get to stay.
I get to stay. So we have had no, no contacts from the general public on any of these policies that are on consent, however, we did have a board member question one of the policies, so we're going to have that board member send us possible wording or things to check into, and then we will get that to our attorneys this week and see if there's a needed change, and if so, we'll take it back to policy and do that. That's policy 9120, bidding for construction work.
So I should hold that for next week?
Okay, so we'll hold that one out for action, 9120. Board members, are we good with consents on all of the other policies? Everybody good? Okay. Okay, so we'll just have the, the one from each of the first reading, second reading on action, everything else will be on consent. And I guess you get to stay up here.
Yes.
So the revised academic calendar.
Yes ma'am, so we received an email giving us the new dates for the March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary election. We were being very conservative in our planning when we did this calendar, however, we chose the second Tuesday of March, which would typically be when they would have that primary, however, they have named it March 3rd as the primary, so we are asking to change in 2020, the March 10th workday to be March 3rd to match the primary date.
But it says over here, May 5th, that we're eliminating.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm sorry, where are you?
What's the number?
So we're eliminating the May 5th date, that was a staff day, is that right, and then we're adding the...
I don't have the previous, I just have the new one in front of me, so it should...
Turn around the screen.
Yeah, so we want, we want the March 3rd date to be the correct date, that's the correct calendar.
And if I remember right, this is what confused me, it came along and ultimately North Carolina said, we're going to switch and do it earlier to be ahead of a lot of other states. Then after that was done, they came back and said, we're going to do that, but we're going to wait until 2020 to do it, so then they changed it back, which is where the first confusion was, so I think we're now back to what the original part of the law was, and that's why the Board of Elections has sent us several changes. And Rich may know something more about that, but that's why it wasn't more, it was in May, they said switch it to March, then they said switch it back to May, and now you're going to March, and then it's supposedly it's going to stay in March, I think.
Supposedly.
Yes.
And we originally had that day in the original calendars, I'm looking here, on the 10th, March 10th, and we're asking it to go to March 3rd.
Okay, just on what the handout is on the board doc, says we're, it was on May 5th and it's now going to be May 3rd.
March 3rd.
March 3rd, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that, maybe a...
I think we're all in agreement that it's best to have the schools closed when we're having, having a moment.
If it works out, yeah, it is good. Okay, so board members, are we okay with consent for the calendar update?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and now we'll have the items for consideration for action at the February 11th board meeting. So Mr. Louder?
Yes ma'am, we have been approached by, I'm sorry, yes ma'am, sorry, we have been approached by a developer across the street from Odell Elementary School to purchase right of way for a extension of a sewer line along the front of our property and also to acquire right of way along Highway 73 for the addition of a turn lane off Highway 73 as part of their development requirements from the City of Concord. You have a letter in your package from the developer, from Odell 73 Investors, describing the property as a map, also attached showing the right of ways, but that they have agreed to with the alignment of the City of Concord, and then as he writes in his letter, we propose that the purchase price paid for the, from the investors for the right of way be valued through a preferred appraisal expert recommended by Cabarrus County Schools. In the notes, they will pay for the appraisal, all legal fees and whatever the appraiser says it's worth. Yes ma'am.
And when will this activity begin?
If, if all easements are acquired, then I guess they'll go forward to design, I would say probably midsummer is where they would start. It shouldn't take very long to install the actual sewer, it's not very much, but it's...
And finish within a few weeks?
They'll probably finish within about two, three months, it'd probably take a little longer for the testing for the City of Concord, usually it takes a while for them to get it being tested and signed off on it.
Any ballpark on what that amount test would be?
No, sir.
This would not compromise our property whatsoever, and is it something we could tap, I mean, we need to tap into, or we can tap into it another time?
Actually, the sewer line has been extended up through our property by a developer across the street through the City of Kannapolis, and we'll be tapping into that line, they will also be tapping into the same line, just one manhole further up, so we'll be using the same line going back through the adjacent development. But that sewer line has not yet been clarified and certified by the city, so we haven't been able to tap into it ourselves yet.
So one more question, with the NC DOT is planning to widen 73, right, and they had some public meeting not too long ago that had three different options of where 73 could be relocated or widened, and one of them had to get, was going behind our school, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
Would that affect us at all? Would that make it unnecessary?
It would, it would not necessarily affect this, but that, that project is about eight years out, 10 years out, so this here would actually be interim, if they decide to continue to grow straight down 73, it would probably change all of the turn lanes, including the ones we installed for our, our interests as well. So, but all, all things are out the door when they start redesigning that to four lanes, but this is what they require under the interim process to make sure they have that turn movement for the additional traffic.
Is this school's property in our name or in the county's name?
It's in the county's name due to the financing of the school itself.
Okay, but we still grant the easement?
We would have to grant the easement, and Cabarrus County is going to do the same thing.
They'll have to approve it too, okay, that's what I'm thinking.
We're working on a process in which we will continue to own the land in the future, and they would just lease it from us for their financing purposes, so we would have to do this double, double thing all the time, but it's not in place for this one yet.
Okay, any questions, concerns? It really doesn't affect our school operations.
It would require them to remove a little bit of our sidewalk, but they'll be putting it back when they get finished with projects.
As long as they leave it the way they found it, basically.
That's really the key, yes ma'am.
And if, his letter indicates they would do it in the summer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so this will be on the action agenda next meeting, and I will back up, I saw a calendar on my next agenda item and I bypassed it, so we will go back to item 7.05, the North Carolina School Boards Association has asked all of us to adapt, use their resolution requesting the legislature to grant us calendar flexibility as we did prior to the 2004 law that took place and required us to start and end school at certain times. So from that draft, I asked Mr. Harrison to review it, update it for us, and so on. That final copy is, Mindy, I'm guessing you placed it out here, right, because I had it, I was looking at my old copy. So David, you want to talk about it a little bit, introduce it, and Rob has also provided some edits to it. Hopefully, we're close to final.
The long and short of the calendar question for the schools of North Carolina, is an alignment between our academic activity and testing and programs that affect graduation timing and possibility of, of students graduating in December and going on to community colleges or getting those early credits, and the, what do you call it, the interests of the, sorry, to go blank here, the, the...
Do you want to maybe just, we can just read it?
The tourism industry of the state prefers a certain calendar schedule, but it is in conflict with the school's business, if you will, of the school's testing and all. But the North Carolina School Board Association is asking all LEAs across the state to consider this and to promote the wording here to their county commissioners and get in consensus so that we can make a kind of concerted effort across the state to get the legislature to consider making adjustments to that calendar schedule.
Basically, we want local control. We decide when it's best to start school, we should decide when it's best to end school, especially the issue when we have Christmas break, and then you come back for three weeks and you do testing, you'd really, ultimately, you'd like to see the, the end of the second quarter or the end of the first semester done before Christmas break, so these are kind of things that are in here.
Okay, I think it may be worth for the audience to go through and read it, so David, you want to start?
Sure.
With the first page, and then Kate, I'll give you warning, I'd like to have your input to this as well.
Whereas, "North Carolina general statutes give local boards of education powers of supervision and control of local school systems, and whereas local control over established school calendars should be an integral component of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education are vested, and whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly legislated control of setting school calendars and imposed a single statewide system..." school calendars and imposed a single statewide system on how school calendars are set. And whereas, the current calendar system sets school start dates no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th, and ends date, and end date no later than Friday closest to June 11th. And whereas, Cabarrus County Schools has implemented two successful early college programs which directly benefit students' learning and outcomes, yet must operate on a calendar different from other high schools in order to align with the community college system's calendar of classes. And this calendar discrepancy causes hardships to family vacations, including visits to North Carolina tourist locations. And whereas, the state mandated late August start date means high schools do not complete the first semester until mid to late January. And whereas, the current statutes force Cabarrus High School students to take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts test scores. And whereas, the second semester for high schools starts two to three weeks later than community colleges and university schedules. And whereas, the, the calendar misalignment severely restricts high school students and recent winter graduates from taking courses at nearby community college or universities, at a, sorry, nearby college or university during the second semester and deprives parents of opportunities to save tuition costs as their students earn transferable college credits. And whereas, the exams for advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes must be conducted on the same day nationwide. And the current calendar North Carolina law shortens the amount of time North Carolina students have to learn the material before the nationwide test day. And whereas, constrictive state mandates on local calendar needs constrain the local administration's opportunities to manage classroom instructional hours for the greatest advantage to students. And whereas, major hurricanes and severe winter snowstorms have caused, uh, Cabarrus County Schools to miss 10 school days over the past year and a half, and over eight school start day, I'm sorry, start time delays of two or more hours. Continue?
Yeah, Rob, did you get the new one up? We'll let Rob finish.
Okay, my turn. Whereas, "Students for fall sports."
Yes, schedules.
My right thought?
Yeah, you're right.
Schedules, I'm sorry. Schedules for fall sports and banned extracurriculars have not changed to coincide with the start date, state mandated school calendar. And whereas, "Local boards of education and district staff are best equipped to understand how to balance meeting the community's needs and maximizing, maximizing student success. And whereas, restoring local control of school calendars will allow local boards of education to meet calendar needs and preferences of families, educators, and businesses in Cabarrus County while allowing for innovative experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners request that the North Carolina House and Senate pass legislation allowing calendar flexibility for Cabarrus County Schools."
Okay, the county commissioners have expressed an interest in approving this as well. School calendar flexibility is a part of the statewide county commissioner legislative agenda. So they're basically waiting for us to approve it, and then they'll have it on their, their calendar as well. So are there any comments, adjustments?
Should we put at the top of this, though, a joint resolution supporting local control of school calendars?
We can. Yep, that's a good idea.
I mean, since, since we're joining together, it's, it's good that our, both elected bodies are of one mind, and we should definitely let that be at the top.
Good idea. Any other Board members? Then I'll let our Teacher of the Year. Your thoughts?
I think local control of the calendar would be a really good thing for our community. I think that we know the needs of our community the best, and we have missed a lot of school from hurricanes and snow and, I can't speak on high school personally, but I have several colleagues, friends who teach high school, and they all would like to see the exams before Christmas break. I know from working at the year-round calendar, it's nice to end, have a break, come back to a fresh start, and I think that would be a positive thing for high schools. I don't think it would really affect tourism, because you're not getting a shortened summer. You still have the same amount of time, you're just ending earlier and starting earlier. So I don't, I would support this for sure.
Thank you. So Board members will vote on that at next week's meeting. So if you spot anything else, please let me know that we need to.
Can I read it again? Can I read my half again next week, too?
No.
No, that was it, that was it. Thank you.
No, so the only change I have right now is to, Mr. Schumaker suggests to add a joint resolution at the front. Okay, now, we are.
Will that be on action or consent?
Action. I think we need to just take a vote on that and show our support. So the public hearing is next. We're still in the open window for signing up. So Board members will take a short recess and come back in here to start by 5 till, and then we'll start right at 7:00. Okay? So the Board is now in recess.
The Board of Education has returned from the brief recess, and we are getting ready to start the public hearing regarding student realignment. So a couple of things before we take the motion to open the public hearing. The Board does appreciate the emails we've received. One thing I would ask, because it helps us not to have duplicate emails, if you would show our emails on the to-line who you're sending it to, sometimes we don't know if you sent it to everybody. So if you do send us any emails in the future, if you send it to all seven of us, and then we don't have to say, "Hey, did you get that one? Did you get that one?"
Send it to the Board Clerk, or Clerk, too.
Yeah, you can also send it to the Board, Mindy Abbott, she's actually Melinda Abbott on the email, and I think, is your email on the Board page?
Uh, when you click on send a link to the Board.
Okay, it'll come up, okay. So you can do it that way, too, and then she sends it to all of us. We just don't want to miss anything, but we also don't want to send each other something that they may have already received. We do listen to your comments. I'll be taking notes, and Dr. Lauter will be explaining about how we'll be recording your input as well, even outside of the, the video recording tonight. And just want for you all to remember that while there's, we've had a lot of emails about following the criteria. Sometimes there's multiple criteria, and they're not always mutually exclusive. Sometimes they overlap. We need to, you know, look at this angle, at that angle, and, and any changes we might make to the current recommended by the committee realignment patterns could precipitate another public hearing. If that is the case, it will be noticed, just like this one is, and it would most likely be at the work session in March. If we take anybody out of a realignment proposal, we don't need to have another public hearing. If we add anybody in to it who was not previously in, then we will add another public hearing. So it's not guaranteed that we need one. It'll depend on kind of where our thoughts collectively go, and it'll take four of us to agree on something. So anyways, Dr. Lauter, if you want to share?
Yeah, just want to share procedurally what we've done in the past with feedback sessions. We have a team of people up here that are going to try to capture the comments of people as they speak. So it will not be word for word, but it is a way, as they're capturing that, you'll be able to see that up on the screen, be able to see what they're keeping. Again, it won't be word for word, what everyone's saying, but you'll at least be able to see that. And then when it's over, they email that document to the school board. So there'll be kind of a summary to be able to see that. And then again, as, as Chairman, Chairperson Furmanbaugh said, it, it is recorded, so there will be a record of everything that everyone says. So again, just to try to help and, and speed things up a little bit and make sure that things are captured.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lauter. Board members, I will take a motion that the public hearing on student realignment be open to public input.
Just a moment, a second.
Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, the public hearing is now open. Those who have signed up either before tonight or by 6:45 are on the list. We, it looks like we have about 14 speakers, and we will start in the order of signups. So I have Michael Guile. Welcome, if you'd like to come to the podium. And just from a procedural standpoint, I think Mr. Basalese, he makes sure people stay in line and whatnot, and will show up here. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak on the realignment topic. That is the only topic for public hearing tonight. And there's a little buzzer. Did you share with them about how there's a buzzer at 20 seconds?
I went.
Okay, yeah, so we're not like zapping you, like on some of the TV shows. So, welcome.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity. Probably each and every one of you have gotten an email from me, at least more times than necessary, probably. I'm here to urge you to look at the criteria regarding Skybrook moving out of Cox Mill Elementary and moving to Odell. We think it would be a big mistake following some of the criteria points, and Matthew Coppers and Dr. Jerry McGibbons' data basically makes our point for us, that you guys pass them with a 10-year plan to realign and get the schools within capacity. His data suggests if nothing is done to Cox Mill Elementary, within a handful of years, the enrollment gets down below capacity. While moving us to Odell, roughly 80 students, when you factor out the Mandarin kids that are staying, brings that school up to capacity immediately, and they've not taken in consideration the amount of growth going into the Odell zone. On the books right now, there's roughly 4,000 residential units either in the works or being planned in Odell. Odell Commons, Cannon Run, Moss Creek Townhomes, Courtyards of Poplar Tent, and about four others that weren't factored into this. So what we fear will happen is you move us out of Cox Mill into Odell, five years down the road, now Odell's overcrowded and Cox Mill is under capacity. We're in a school zone that's a mature development. There's no more growth in there. Their study indicates that everybody is aging out of the elementary school, as has happened in some of the other schools here in Cabarrus County. The final point I'll make before I get shocked is, if you look at a map, it makes no sense to move us north of Poplar Tent. In our little, nice southwest corner of the county, all four or five neighborhoods are contiguous to one another in that school. By moving us to Odell, there'll be no neighborhood with our classmates within like two miles of us. We'll be the only one south of Poplar Tent, not attached to anybody. So it makes no sense. So Mr. Walter, I'm going to agree with you on what you stated a year ago. Hiring an outside firm that doesn't know our area and paying them $150,000 to do this, that makes sense. So keep Skybrook in Cox Mill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kara Wells?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to say some of the same things that Michael said. I'm representing Skybrook as well, or speaking on the behalf of Skybrook. I have a first grader at Cox Mill Elementary, and we are just requesting that we are allowed to remain and not move to Odell. As Michael said, the McKibbin study shows Cox Mill's population is set to decline over the next 10 years. We have a very small amount of kids that would be impacted if we, and we would not increase that population by very much. And it would not seem to be a big impact if the population is set to decline. Also, there's been a lot of misrepresentation of our neighborhood, that we are associated with other Skybrook neighborhoods, and we are not. We are not connected to them. There was hundreds of comments on the comment forum online that said that the buses already come in our neighborhood for Odell, so it's not a big deal, and that's just not true. As Michael stated, we're the only neighborhood in that area that would be moved to Odell. Also, we were told our students were needed to fill seats, and that's why we were moving, that we needed to fill seats at Odell, which really just goes against minimizing the impact of students in that criteria. And then the last point, again, we should be looking at the criteria of using major roads as the boundary. Poplar Tent should be the boundary line, and we would really be our own, the only neighborhood above that. Everybody else would be going to Cox Mill, and we'd be out there alone. So please consider letting us remain, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Charles?
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you guys tonight. Although I was not on the realignment committee, I did attend almost every single one of the meetings. I have two children that are, will be impacted by this decision. And I say that only because what I'm about to say next is probably going to surprise a lot of people in here. I bought a house to, so my kids could go to certain schools, and they're not going to. And having gone through and sat through all the meetings that they went through, and listened to all the conversations and debates and discussions that were done through the meetings, we couldn't speak, we just could, could listen there. I actually started to realize, you know, these guys are right. The, what they're putting forward is, is a good plan. There was a lot of discussion about what planning block was going to move here, what planning block was going to move there, what numbers here, what percentage there. But there was an overwhelming discussion about how it was going to impact the students and if it was going to benefit, benefit the students. I know during the proposal, they, Mr. Cropper provided you with a bunch of core principles, utilization, proximity, feeder patterns and such. They were not just words that were thrown out there and put on a poster. These guys, the people that were on the realignment committee really worked hard to, to include all those aspects of the, the principles that he was put forward. So even though my kids won't be going to the same school that I'd want them to go to, I do think they did put forth a lot of effort to create a solid plan. I do, yeah, Cabarrus County is growing, and adding the school is going to help. It's not going to be, I think we're still going to need more schools, but that's a topic for another day. But I do think that this plan, as it is right now, is a, is a solid plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. C.G. Fisher? Good evening.
My name is C.G. Fisher, and I am here tonight representing several families in the Rollingwood Forest neighborhood. Many of these families have children already in the Cabarrus County school system that will be redistrict as a result of the recent study conducted in our community. Personally, I am one of the newest members, as our family purchased a lot at the end of 2016 and built a custom home. We moved from a large development in the current and proposed Cox Mill District. I was comfortable doing that, knowing that our children would still have the opportunity to attend the school that I originally moved to Concord for. Our story tonight is fairly easy to tell, as the consulting firm hired by CCS to conduct the realignment study had Rollingwood Forest District to Odell, Harris, and Cox Mill in all of the initial proposals. Odell was a necessary change for us, as we are currently District for Bogart Elementary, separating our children from their friends in a very critical time in their personal development. Our community was a small outlier that went to an elementary school that did not feed to the same middle and high school. One of the key criteria in the study is to establish clear feeder patterns and continuity. Redistricting us to Odell accomplishes this. Our neighborhood began in the 80s and is much more established. There are only a few students in the CCS system currently, and many of these students are being pulled from their current schools as a result of the current proposal. We are not a large development by any means. We are a very small percentage of the overall study. Thus, the impact of leaving our community in the initial proposal footprint would not be dramatic. One of the neighbors here with me tonight moved here three years ago so that she can make sure her kids attended Harris and Cox Mill High School and built her family home. She also grew up in this community and was able to check multiple boxes by moving back home to raise her kids in a great set of schools. Their daughter is now an eighth grade basketball player at Harris Road and has learned what it means to be part of a team. Another family built directly beside of us a year before we did, so their daughter could start high school at Cox Mill, and their middle school son could go to Harris Road. She is now a cheerleader at Cox Mill, and he is a member of the band. and he is a member of the band. Another family, like the first, grew up here and moved back to the neighborhood to raise her kids close to her parents and her sister. She too, like me, has young children and moved here in addition to family for the schools. Based on all the information and presentations I've read online, and the fact that our neighborhood was outlined in the Odell-Harris-Cox Mill and the initial proposal presented, these next bullet points were easy to create to share with you today. We are not a mega-development fighting to keep our kids in their schools, asking for consistency with the feeder elementary school. We are a small community, and the numbers will prove it. Odell Primary is 2.2 miles from my home on Unce Road or four minutes away. WR Odell is less than two miles away or four minutes. Harris Road is less than three miles away or five minutes. Cox Mill High is less than four miles away or seven minutes. Neither of these options require buses or families to cross over any major highways, which was a major concern on the table. Bogart Northwest Middle and Northwest High are on average at least seven minutes away, and require buses and families to enter Highway 73 and turn at the large Kannapolis Parkway and Highway 73 intersection. This is also more dangerous for our high school children once they get their license and begin driving. Once, one of the family's with me tonight's son is currently at Bogart Elementary School, and spends approximately 43 minutes on his bus ride home from Bogart in the afternoon. He's a kindergartner, so a long enough ride like that, he actually ends up falling asleep before the bus gets to his house. It is not conducive, as our community is a bit of an outlier for that school, which again is why it makes sense for us to attend Odell. It's been difficult for our children in the past to have to go to a different middle school than most of their elementary friends, and now we are moving them during their middle and high school days. This is a huge impact on preteens and teenagers. Moving us to Odell and allowing us to stay in Harris and Cox Mill minimizes the impact on our children. We are south of 73, north of Poplar Tent, and feet off of Odell School Road. Highway 73 and Kannapolis Parkway are natural boundaries to align with the initial proposals on the table. To be honest with you, I never expected to need to speak with you today and represent my fellow neighbors. I was so excited when the consultant released the initial proposals in the summer of 2018, because every single one had our neighborhood in our preferred schools. None of us really thought that we would cha, that would change, and we would need to speak to help prove what had already been proven. We meet every single criteria outlined in the realignment study. While I have referenced the larger neighborhoods in the community, I feel fairly confident that the feedback received from some of those communities, and I guess from what I've heard today, probably didn't like either, is probably part of the reason why our community got pushed out of the Odell District in the, in the process. We are only a small community, a community of families that built here to be closer to family, have more land for our kids to run and play, but still safely cross the road to play with their friends and cousins, a community that has grown slightly over the past few years with families like mine and several others that I'm representing tonight, to have, that have built forever homes, so that our kids could grow up in our preferred schools in Cabarrus County. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share our story with you tonight, and we would truly appreciate any additional consideration made in allowing our neighborhood back into the Harris Road-Cox Mill District and Odell as a feeder elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Fulton?
Good evening. Good evening to the superintendent, Madam Chairman, and to members of the board. Thank you once again for taking the time to, to hear us out tonight. The, the, the first thing that I'd like to, to say is just how much respect and admiration I have for all the citizens who were on, served on the realignment committee. I attended many of those meetings, and I have a pretty good idea of what was involved in, in, in their work. And I think that they worked very, very hard to deliver a well-considered result, given the constraints that they were, they were operating under. They devoted a lot of time to this effort and deserve an incredible amount of credit and appreciation from the, from, from the community. The, the other thing that was really nice about the, the committee was that it was incredibly diverse, and I think reflective of the, the county as a, as a whole. But, but to say that, that this was a community-driven process with extensive public participation is somewhat disingenuous. The, the criteria that the committee was directed by the board to operate under and constantly reminded to abide by were generated by the board itself, including provisions of the 10-year plan. So the outcome was intended to be somewhat preordained. There was also no direct public participation allowed in any of the committee meetings, except those where the redistricting options were actually presented for comment. So, direct participation in the process was actually restricted and tightly controlled. There was, of course, the ability to comment via email and so on, and I know that, that those comments were circulated and disseminated to the, to the committee, but the committee was always, once again, directed to follow the criteria that the board had, had given them to, to, to follow. But now that one of the criteria the committee was originally given, the construction of a new 800-seat school on the R. Brown McAllister site, was pulled from the realignment study, and another criteria, the closure of Beverly Hills Elementary is in question, my, my, my hope is that the board will be transparent and forthright about all future plans for the McAllister, Beverly Hills, and Culture and Web districts and facilities. I also hope that in the meantime, the board will dedicate sufficient resources to these existing buildings, so they will not continue to be demolished by the neglect of, of necessary maintenance. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Jean, is it Wanish?
Wanish.
Wanish, okay. Welcome.
Hey, I wanted to thank the board and the committee members. I had the chance to sit in and listen. I know this is not an easy process, an easy decision. I played with the maps on my own, and was like, ooh, I can, no, it's not that easy. It's not. I know it isn't. And so, you know, I, I recognize that. I want to, I'm a parent from Skybrook. I'd like to ask you guys to consider the Skybrook Elementary. As you look at that, for us, that's the biggest move. I come to you as a parent who has a, be a rising second grader and a rising kindergartner. We're actually in the Mandarin immersion program, so officially, we would still remain. It's not for me about the school, but as I listen to the criteria, it really struck me that when you look at our area, it, we fit within a lot of the criteria that they were trying to keep. And I know that it is a numbers game, but as many of my neighbors have, have mentioned, as you look at those numbers, the declining population of Cox Mill, particularly for our neighborhood as it ages out, you start to look at that and say, okay, what does this mean? You know, it, I know you can't perfectly average it, but with the about 75 kids, it's less than two kids per classroom, if you were divided evenly, which I know it never is. But it's not a huge impact to the school, but it's a huge impact to our children. When you look at dividing roads, right, we've mentioned that we are landlocked, and we will be isolated from other schools. There's no walking to, you know, other neighbors. One side is Mecklenburg. The, the other side that's frankly physically closest to me, that we would walk to to play with, would now be different school districts. The, the streets, for those who are used to Poplar, at that time of day, it's impassable for morning and the evening. You can't turn left and actually move. So it becomes not only dangerous to make the turn from where I am, but it, it becomes a roadblock, which the other school lets you in. So if you look at several of the criteria, trying not to move our children, our children will be moved to another school, very possibly many of them will get moved back as the changes come. They'd be moved back to their cohort for middle school. They'd then follow them through. Where if we did choose to leave them, we'd be adhering to many of the guidelines that I think they set out, to a lot of those made sense. And I think we've been incorporating a, a local community view of what the traffic is like, what the actual populations are like, and the impact. So, I think it's important for me, for the sense of community, for the continuity for the children, and frankly, just even as parents, trying to safely get our kids to and from. There is no option for us when we're going to Odell. The other, the other way gives us a split option, and at least you have multiple ways that you can get your children safely to and from school, missing some of those traffics. So, again, I thank everybody for their hard work, and I hope that as you, you know, continue this discussion, you will take, take that into consideration.
Thank you. Lee Schuman?
Hello. Good evening, Madam Chair, and Board Members, and Dr. Louder. I just wanted to come this evening and talk about a few things with the realignment. I know that you guys know me. Normally, I would ask for five minutes, because I'm part of a larger group, but I won't need that much time this evening, plus I'll be here for the next few months anyway. No. But I just wanted to remind the larger group, you know, we started with the issue of Beverly Hills and the closure and the discussions around that school. You know, we're all discussed as part of a realignment study for Royal Oaks, and now here we are in a larger realignment conversation that also still has the same outcome, which is essentially Beverly Hills going to Royal Oaks in the realignment. Obviously, you voted tonight for the contract for Morris Bird to do the site assessment, so we all know that we have that process in front of us still. And so, just wanted to reiterate again tonight that for us, this is not a de facto closing of Beverly Hills, or a vote to close if the realignment study were approved as it's currently sits. We, we still view this as a temporary realignment, until what time we have the assessment back and we can review it. Obviously, you can review it, determine whether a school was viable on the grounds of Beverly Hills. And then if it is, obviously adding that school to the 10-year plan. I think that my one comment would be that I believe there's been an opportunity missed in the realignment study for the option of if a new Beverly Hills elementary school were to be approved, to be built, at the current 500-seat capacity that is being reviewed now, how those seats at Royal Oaks then would be filled, and how that would help some of the conversations that you're hearing tonight about some of the other areas that are being affected, and how those students are being realigned. And so, I'm disappointed that there's not a Plan B in the realignment study that would show the effects of a 500-seat Beverly Hills elementary school, and the seats at Royal Oaks then available to be used as part of another realignment with elementary schools, because that's still an option that's very much on the table, and it's being reviewed now by the board. And so, that's the majority of the comments that I have tonight. I know that this is a really difficult process that you're involved in, affects everyone in the county, and it doesn't just affect our school. Certainly isn't about our one elementary school. But I do have a, I think, a responsibility to make sure that our situation is at least understood in a somewhat different light in relation to the whole entire realignment study. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Brian, is it Hopperd or Hopeert? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. As you said, my name is Brian, and I, when I was contemplating, discussing, I contemplated the emotional side of things, and my kids, and showing pictures, and doing that type of thing. But I, I feel like the more powerful side is just kind of the, the common sense stuff, and some of the stuff. To begin with, I'm with the Skybrook neighborhood, one of many you'll hear from tonight, I hope. And I, I just hope that you'll really consider this realignment project. A couple of things which have kind of been covered a little bit. First of all, a move to Odell would, would bring that school to capacity overnight. And in, in a growing area that Odell is in, with dozens of neighborhoods planned to be developed, and large neighborhoods and large plots of land, it would just bombard that school with more kids. In, in preparing for this, I actually drove my daughter to school a few days ago. She rides a bus currently. She's in the Mandarin program, as one of the previous speakers was. She loves riding the bus. Her little brother is going to be an up-and-comer in a couple of years, and is looking forward to riding the bus. But in staying in the Mandarin program, but being removed from Cox Mill, that would be a car rider. It would be an additional car rider. If you've ever been to Cox Mill Elementary in the mornings and seen the car rider line, you would know that it's already at capacity, as it snakes through the entire campus, and takes quite a while to offload your children. So, this would just add to an already congested traffic issue, both in getting car riders through Cox Mill with the Mandarin kids, 20-plus that are in Skybrook, and then trying to get the rest of the kids to Odell, crossing over, crossing over Poplar Tent, and then of course turning onto 73, which again, if you've ever seen those during any type of rush hour, it's a disaster at best. Also, is another point was made, Skybrook would be isolated. If, if we are taken out of Cox Mill and added to Odell, we're isolated, we're a tiny little pocket. If you're familiar with Skybrook, we're a split community, where maybe two-thirds, three-quarters of the communities in Mecklenburg County, and just a small portion of us is in Cabarrus County. So, like they said, the impact of, of our neighborhood on CMES is just not that great, but would add to an already at-capacity school if moved to Odell. So I just urge you to please not take this study at face value. I know that a lot of time and effort was put into that, but I ask you to please look at all the stats, look at the, some of the information that was perhaps missed. And I know that it's a daunting task, and I can't imagine what that would be like. But I appreciate your time and your effort in looking into this further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bishop Jordan?
Good evening. I greet you in Jesus' name. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, Board, as man and citizen. Must be honest, this is my first time knowing about this realignment, but I come here standing mostly for Africa, America, and Latin. When you're realigning, I know it is growth. It has to be done. Y'all educated. I know you know what you're doing. But I want to make sure that Africa, America, that they're equal when you're realigned. I'm in favor of neighborhood school, close, because our kids get up so early in the morning and be out there, some of them halfway asleep. So if y'all take that unconsideration, I preach that great. Appreciate it. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Heather Ward? Welcome.
I'm actually here to represent Freedom Acres. I've got all of them with me. We're here to ask that you reconsider your placement of Neighborhood Planning Block 89 for the high school, instead of JM Robinson, to go to West Cabarrus. Following the guidelines that were set forth, I'm just going to go down them quickly, because I have a lot to read. One was close proximity. Our reason behind that is that JM Robinson is 3.4, 4 miles away from our neighborhood, whereas West Cabarrus is 1.8 miles away from our neighborhood and is off the same street that we live off of. For number two guideline of maximizing busing efficiencies for the transportation of students, Planning Block 89 is on the border of the new realignment. The neighborhood that we back up to, Carriage Downs, is slated to attend West Cabarrus. Upon exiting that neighborhood, the neighborhood, the buses would have to make a left onto Weddington to return to the school, whereas if they were to include our planning block, they would continue with a right. Our neighborhood is in a U shape, and it would be more efficient in having the buses coming. The third was the use of natural boundaries. If we're using major roads, we felt like pit schools should be the cutoff, not just a bump to include one neighborhood. There's less intersections to cross going to the new high school as opposed to JM Robinson. For guideline number four, balancing school faculty utilization, currently there are less than a dozen school-aged children in Planning Block 89. And to account for the future growth, which was guideline number five, Planning Block 89 is mature, established neighborhood. All of the available lots have already been built, so almost no future growth. Numbers six and seven of the guidelines was make every effort to, to establish continuous zones and minimize the impact on students. Our neighborhood backs up to Carriage Downs. All of the kids in our neighborhoods have been in elementary school with those children since kindergarten. There are trails that connect these two neighborhoods, and our children go back and forth between these two, as if we are one neighborhood. And it does not make any sense for us to separate them into two different high schools. And for eight, establish clear feeder patterns and continuity. If you look at the proposed feeder pattern for Winkler Middle School, they split. 62% of the kids will go to the new high school, and 38 will go to JM Robinson, 38%. These kids have made friendships and been in school together since they were in kindergarten, and now they're going to be separated after middle school. And this has a huge impact on their friendships and their success in schools. We're asking that you reconsider your placement of Planning Block 89 using the criteria that's been listed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I will just tell you personally, I appreciate having the Planning Block number because I can find that more quickly. Let's see. Marquita?
Yes.
Macon, welcome.
Thank you. I'm actually fairly new to the area, and my daughter's a rising ninth grader. She'll be a 10th grader once this takes place. And my biggest concern has been the start time for high school. It's so early in the mornings during the fall and winter, I notice that the kids at the bus stop are out there in the dark. And for me, that's a big safety concern, so I'm hoping that maybe start times and end times will be something that is considered with this realignment as well, because predators and just kids' safety in general is something I'm really concerned about, especially when they're standing at the main highways waiting on the buses at the bus stop. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Todd Rixman, welcome.
Good evening. I am addressing the school board because I am deeply disturbed about the framework that Cropper GIS used to guide the realignment committee's work. Research tells us that we make the best decisions when we follow three steps: establish criteria, set weights for each of the criteria, then score each option against the weighted criteria. In this case, Cropper GIS only performed the first step. Furthermore, Mr. Cropper has publicly stated that his firm deliberately avoided setting weights and scoring options, making it impossible to objectively compare different options. Mr. Cropper, in remarks to this board, did allow that school utilization was emphasized during the realignment committee's sessions. Using school assets efficiently is important. However, there is a danger in emphasizing utilization to a vague degree over other criteria, like feeder patterns, that impact student outcomes and well-being. Efficiency must be balanced with effectiveness. These schools exist for our children, not the other way around. I know several members of the realignment committee, so I feel confident in saying that Cabarrus County should be proud of the amount of effort the committee put into this. Unfortunately, the committee was given a flawed process to do its work, so it is difficult to trust the outcome. It is now up to this board to fix the error that should not have existed in the first place. The board should review the criteria, set weights, and score all the options so that the committee reviewed, that the committee reviewed in a transparent manner, so public trust can be restored. It is certainly not convenient, but it is the right thing to do for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, next have Laura Milliken. Welcome. You can go ahead, start. If you want to stand closer to this mic, just because that's the hot one, so to speak.
Thank you. I am representing Rocky River Crossing on very late notice, so I don't have all the notes, so we're pinch hinting on this one here. When people say Harrisburg, they think of Hickory Ridge High School. Hickory Ridge, Harrisburg, it represents our community. Rocky River Crossing, represented in Planning Block 137, and also the Patricia area of 135, represent Harrisburg. It's always been Harrisburg. It'll always be Harrisburg. If you look at the map, Harrisburg's written on top of those areas. I'm a longtime native of Harrisburg, as my mother and grandfather went to Harrisburg High School. I'm a central grad myself, but a proud Harrisburg native. We're asking that you please reconsider zoning 135 and 137, I'm sorry, planning blocks as it cuts our kids out of the neighborhoods and out of Harrisburg that they've grown up in. They've played HYA. We pay Harrisburg taxes, while I understand this is a county issue, it is our community. There are areas represented in Hickory Ridge High School now that aren't part of Harrisburg, that didn't grow up in Harrisburg. They went to Bethel, or they, as slotted here, attend Bethel, or the Central area. We're asking that you take a look at our neighborhood, because right now, we are slated to go to Hickory Ridge Middle School, but then slated to go back to J.M. Robinson High School. That tears those kids away from their friends that they've been with and tearing away during high school. Just a bad choice, or as we feel. We want our kids to stay with the kids that they grew up with, limiting their impact during that hard time of middle school to high school transitions. Rocky River Crossing, or I'm sorry, Rocky River has historically been a dividing factor over that area, allowing Hickory Ridge up to Rocky River. It's what we're asking that you just maintain that borderline. That would then take 135 and 137 back into the Hickory Ridge High School areas. Rocky River Crossing will not experience, nor will the Patricia area, experience additional growth, whereas the Bethel and CC Griffin areas that will now be new to the Hickory Ridge High School areas will see much greater growth. Currently, our children will attend Pitts Elementary, Hickory Ridge Middle, and now they're slated to attend that J.M. Robinson. We're asking that you please consider looking at some of these other areas, whereas CC Griffin or Bethel Elementary would be new to the Hickory Ridge area, and our children can attend high school with their siblings. Unfortunately, so many of our families have already left because they've been told this was a done deal for our neighborhood. We're hoping that's certainly not the case. Please keep our community together, keep Harrisburg together. Harrisburg was raised on Highway 49. Please don't make that the deciding factor for just these one and two planning blocks, 135 and 137. Location-wise, we are much closer to Hickory Ridge High School than the Bethel areas. The natural border of Hickory Ridge, I'm sorry, of Rocky River would keep our community still within the Hickory Ridge area, and the future growth should also be a determining factor. Again, please consider keeping 135 and 137 as a part of Hickory Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, is it Tenna Brown? They left? Okay, okay. Okay, Board Members, that is the end of the speakers this evening. I'll take a motion that we close the public hearing. Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mrs. Grimsley made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Did we want to see if anyone else wants to speak? Have we got time?
No, because we really need to follow the rules of the public hearing, otherwise they could go on. And they can, everyone can still email, which we'll address that in a second. So, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Okay, we do not have on our agenda tonight any discussion, but Board Members, just from a guidance standpoint, I guess for the public, as I mentioned before, if you want to email us, you're welcome to do so. You might want to stay away from kind of just copying your friend's email that they blind copied you on. We like to hear new information, how it impacts you, you know, any new insight. You know, the Board Members live across the county, so we do know a lot of the areas and a lot of the roadways, but there might be some, you know, unique nuances in your neighborhood that would be helpful, as many people mentioned that tonight. So, Mr. Schumaker, I look like you're ready to say something?
No, I was just looking at Tenna.
Okay, you're just listening? So, the plan right now is, oh, is Carpenter?
Well, to add to that, Madam Chairman, as you mentioned, I think it'd be very helpful if you know your block number. I think that's very, very helpful if you could put that in. Also, Madam Chairman, when or how is it helpful? If we have comments ourself, do we direct that to you? If we want to suggest changes or we have suggestions, do we email you, or what do we do if we want to make suggestions?
Does that have to be public?
And do we make it public? Do we send the email directly to you? What do we do?
Any email that is sent by one of you or received by another of you, unless it includes confidential information, would be a public record. It doesn't have to be published at the time you send it or receive it, but it would be a public record if anyone requests.
So, and I will share, Mr. Carpenter, that I've made a spreadsheet. I sent it to Mr. Walter and Ms. Reimer, just to see if I missed any columns on it, so we can kind of track, because you may think of something I haven't thought of and vice versa, so we can all learn from each other. So, my plan is if you will email Mr. Walter and myself, as our protocol is, I will try to keep up with the logging of the requests, and I'm actually probably going to adapt that format, so I do want the feedback from the two I sent the spreadsheet to. But I'm also going to log some of the comments. So, Skybrook, for example, you know, some of the notes, they said, "We have notes publicly taken," but I was sitting here writing as well, and we have emails. So, we will log all of that, just to kind of see where it comes together. So, is there a plus minus? Is there someone who they don't want the neighborhood moved from an area, but another district says, "We might want to go to that area," instead of being realigned, how the proposal is? So, again, we need to look at the criteria, see what the plus-minus net effect is, which is why we'll have some discussion next week at our business meeting. If we determine it's the best scenario to readjust, then we'll have another public hearing on March 4th. The final vote right now is scheduled for March 11th. Questions? So, we all have a lot of homework to do, Mr. Walter.
Just confirming, for next week, we have a discussion time?
We have a discussion period next week.
So, we can be transparent about the process and what our thinking is?
Yes, yeah. I will caution you all, though, is if you can send your comments, so I can get them kind of logged, and we can see what other people are thinking of and maybe do our own homework based on what, you know, you all are thinking, so that will be helpful. Any other thoughts tonight, Board Members? Again, thank you all for coming. We do appreciate the participation from the community. Redistricting is never easy. Some of us have been through this a few too many times, but we do try to do our homework, be conscientious, and your input helps us with that studying. So, Board Members, I'll take a motion to adjourn for this evening. Anybody else you want to stay? I have a motion from Mrs. Grimsley, a second by Mr. Schumaker. All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you to our viewing public and to everyone in attendance. We appreciate you. Good evening.